This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on April eighteenth of two thousand twenty-four, and was posted on the Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, two twenty-one South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my right and left of council chambers. Councilmember George, can you lead us in a place of leisure?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Anna Foster.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavaro.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hill.
Here.
Council President Hurd.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Johansson.
Councilwoman Beth Stonic.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hooger.
Here.
Okay. Discussion items are affordable housing. Please note that no formal action will be taken tonight. And with that, Terry, could you, we're going to be talking about Track C, two thousand twenty-one Downtown Redevelopment Plan Amendment, so, and the zoning method.
Okay, so first up, the affordable housing update, and I'm just going to mention, Brian, please come up. Brian Slaw is our Affordable Housing Planner and is working to get us ready for the next round of affordable housing. I want to just mention one thing, just a housekeeping. The mic on the ceiling is what's picking up our conversation, so just project. Brian, you can try to use that, it's more for the room, and since there's nobody other than Chris here, I think we can not worry about that. The recording should be fine. But Brian's worked with us for several years now on our affordable housing compliance with round three, and as you may have read in the news, we're gearing up for round four, and so we invited Brian to come and kind of orient everybody to where, what that means for the borough and what our plans are for getting ready. So I would, let me, I'm going to share my screen so that we can look at his presentation.
We'll use controls. And then, hold on.
You may not be so welcome.
No, we will, we will.
Why is it doing? There we go. And then, hey. The arrow to the right. Before, before we get started, just want to note, for the record, that Stephanie, Councilmember Kim Johansson has just joined.
So affordable housing, fourth round, we're in the third round right now.
Oh, I turned it on, I'm sorry.
Well, of course, turning it on is always helpful. Let's try that.
There you go.
Back it up. Definitely one way. Let's try this. You'll get.
Went to the end.
House everybody.
Okay, we're done, let's go home. We've met all our obligations.
Any questions? So you have a preview.
Anyway, so perhaps we'll start at the beginning. So I'm Brian Slaw, I'm one of the principals in Clark, Kaiten, and Hits, which is city planning, landscape architecture, architecture, about forty-five people, the firm, most of them on the architectural side. And so we're gearing up for the fourth round, we're in the third round right now. And so just to give everybody an overview, what's an affordable housing, and what does that mean? Debt restricted for a specific time period, typically rehabilitation, ten years to thirty years, and that will be changing in the fourth round to a degree. The rent or the purchase price is controlled during this period, and then it's available only to income-qualified households in your particular housing region. You're in Housing Region Three, and that's Huntington, Middlesex, and Somerset Counties. Really glossing over a lot.
Who do you want to pass on there?
Did I? I got you. It's very sensitive. So. So the fourth round started, at least, with legislation that was passed and signed by the governor in March. And unlike the prior rounds, one, two, and three, the plan actually has to be done before the fourth round starts. And that fourth round starts July the first, two thousand twenty-five. So we're, you know, eight or nine months out from when that actually begins. This time, the plan needs to be done beforehand. And so that legislation created a timeline. So we've passed two deadlines already, and this has to do with monitoring. First, if you have a trust fund or an affordable housing trust.
I'm sorry, you said that the fourth round starts July, two thousand twenty-five, or two thousand twenty-four?
Twenty-five.
Okay, that's, I thought my eye was telling me differently.
There's these, like, these precursors that we have to do ahead of time. So one of those is if you have an affordable housing trust fund, they want to know about it. There were used, there was a system where you were supposed to input all this information called the CTM, run by the Council on Affordable Housing. Well, the Council on Affordable Housing kind of fell apart. And the governor stopped appointing people to the board, and then that's one of the reasons we had very extended third round. It was only supposed to be ten years, ended up being twenty-six. And I could point some fingers about who was blamed for that, but no need to go into that. So one of those milestones was, you had an affordable housing trust fund, was to tell the state what was in it. Well, as part of your compliance with your affordable housing plan and your settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, which you entered into back, I think, in two thousand seventeen, your housing plan, which was adopted in two thousand eighteen, also had a schedule in it of monitoring and reporting to Fair Share Housing Center and also publishing it on the municipal website. So we've been doing that monitoring for you for some time, so it was relatively simple for us to do monitoring. The original deadline was June the eighteenth. Once the deadline was passed, the legislature actually passed an amendment to the law, which said, oh, never mind, you can just hand it in September. But, you know, we're on the ball, we had it in by June the eighteenth. September the sixteenth, which has just passed, was for what's co-unit monitoring, and that's the affordable housing units themselves. Where are they, what kind are they, what kind of controls are on them, what's that? So that was just submitted a little time ago. Now, the next deadline is that, you know, there's affordable housing obligations. So there's what's called a new construction component, there's a rehabilitation share, which is fixing up, fixing up substandard houses. And there's, those are basically two main legs of your housing plan. So a lot of the turmoil in the third round had to do with what those affordable housing numbers were. And in fact, they have never been finally determined by any court or the state. There's been a workaround that's been established, and people have been following that generally. But by October the eighteenth, the Department of Community Affairs is supposed to issue affordable housing numbers for municipalities. It's kind of what has it, they might not meet that deadline.
Your way.
Yeah. And, and so the next deadline after that point, though, is municipalities have to stipulate what your affordable housing numbers are, what, what they're going to be. Now, the thing about the numbers that the Department of Community Affairs is coming out with is their disadvisory, municipalities don't have to accept them. But by the end of January, you have to tell the state, and they're very drastic measures if you do not do so, meaning you lose immunity from builder's rights laws. You have to tell them what your numbers are. Well, just so happens, our firm has been crunching numbers all summer about that. We have some preliminary numbers stored here. But maybe we ought to talk about something like that, more like a closed session at some point in future. So, but January thirty-first is a deadline for municipalities saying to the judiciary what those numbers are going to be and what you're going to meet in your plan. So there's some pretty tricky deadlines in this. It did it again, jumped.
How was the next one?
Yeah. Stipulate your affordable housing numbers.
There's another date. Let's have a sequence. So somehow the third round, the third round should be up further.
It's acting as a state.
It is, it is. Well, let me just say quickly, on the third round, Highland Park's done very well. It's met all of its obligations, it didn't have, before that, in the prior round, it didn't have an obligation, but it's met all of its new construction obligation, and has the surplus of forty-two units, which can be put towards the fourth round. And if the, and if the Gabriel Estates project moves forward, that would gain another eleven units on top of that forty-two. So you've done an admirable job of meeting your obligations, so you're in good shape.
I have a quick question, you said you met our obligation for the third one, and what's the remainder, left over?
It's forty-two.
Thank you.
So it's a hundred and fifty-eight. The obligation was one seventy-three, and that was what was in that settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing. And you have two hundred and two units and credits. So you're, that math doesn't quite add up.
I would say the headline is, we're walking into the fourth round.
With surplus.
That's what I was trying to.
The next one has one seventy-three on it, too.
Yeah, one seventy-three.
What do we have left over?
So, remember, so January thirty-first, municipality has to stipulate its numbers. Now that is a resolution that you guys have to pass. Within forty-eight hours, not an hour over, it has to be transmitted to what's called the dispute resolution program. That's in the judiciary. It's going to, it's a, it's a, I don't know why they call it a program, it's going to be a board of seven people already appointed by the governor, most of whom are retired judges. Now, it just so happens, since it's retired judges, are people who have been dealing with this issue in the court system and with affordable housing. So for example, the judge that did like, like seventy days of trial, which is gigantic, on determining the numbers for the third round that everybody's been using, she, Mary Jacobson, is on this, is part of this path. So at least they have some facility with how this stuff gets done. They don't have any staff, but, so you could kind of think of it, if you want, as like the judicial equivalent of the Council on Affordable Housing. But they probably would not like that characterization, suspect. So now, there is then a month after that, the month of February, which is the deadline to challenge municipal affordable housing obligations. So we'll have these obligations put out there, and then Tom, Dick, and Harry can, they can dispute what those numbers are. Now, supposedly, there's, it's supposed to be based on some type of analysis that, that they said that those numbers are incorrect or inaccurate, and that has to be submitted to the dispute resolution program in that month. Then, in the next month, the people, the panel and the program are supposed to decide whether, decide to resolve all of those challenges. So I've already talked to some of the administration judiciary about this, and they said that the court system doesn't decide anything. So I suspect there's going to have to be some, there'll have to be either a judicial decision or there'll be a legislative change for this one month period. And why do I say that? Because the Supreme Court in fifteen, when they issued the decision and finally got everybody going on the third round, they said, this, this will take six months, okay? We're still dealing with it now. There's no way you're going to deal with challenges in one. So the legislation is a little, it's a fairytale. But it doesn't mean that you can't have a number that you work towards, makes sense, so. Then, by June the thirtieth, you have to draft and adopt your fourth round housing elements of Fair Share Plan, that's the last date. So if you think about what has to happen, there's a lot of work that has to happen in the late winter and spring for the municipalities. And so that's why we'd like to get started with all our, and we have like thirty-some plans to do. So we're going to be really busy. And all the planners in the state are going to be busy, because all this has to be done for at least three hundred and fifty municipalities that decide to participate, because that's how many have settlement agreements with Fair Share Housing Center, out of the five hundred and some, so. There'll be some that won't participate, fully build out towns, super careless, right? But, and, but there'll be some municipalities in fully built out that want to do the right thing. So. But if you think about, you know, the plan has to be drafted, it has to go to the planning board, then it has to go to the governing body, and so you have all these meetings in between that have to happen, try to craft a plan, and then have a good public hearing. And I know that Park likes to engage the public in what they're doing. It's not like I have some municipalities where nobody shows up, and, you know, it's like, okay, you know you can count on the fact that it's going through with people base. And you municipalities, though, want a lot of public engagement with these processes. So you have to think about how you might want to handle this plan next year. And the more, like, pre-planning you can do, better. Then we've got even more key dates of the fourth round. So on August the thirty-first, then there's a deadline to challenge the municipal housing plan. September thirty-first, any necessary amendments to the housing plan have to be finished. Like, say you decide, okay, you want to negotiate with somebody, somebody challenges your plan, you decide to negotiate, and that's, at that point, you have to have everything finished up with your housing plan. March the thirty-first in two thousand twenty-six, so a year from this March, all the ordinances that, you know, whether it's zoning, or if you have to redo your affordable housing ordinance, or any of the implementing things that you need to do, that's all got to be done by the end of March. So that's all the key deadlines, there's quite a few, as you can see. But I think for your, for your thought, the key, I think the, the big one is really getting the plan done and adopted by the middle of next year. So then there's the new protocols or the new things that, new processes. So the dispute resolution program is court-based, as I said, they're the ones that will actually issue the approval of your housing plan. They're going to call those compliance certifications, because they couldn't use the same term that COA used, like substantial certification, or, sorry, substantive certification. And as I mentioned, seven members appointed by the governor, they've been appointed for, I guess maybe he did that in the summer. And then DCA is supposed to update the process for certifying administrative, this is all implementation, certifying administrative agents, municipal housing liaisons, and, are you the municipal housing liaison, Terry?
Yes.
And expediting spending plan changes. Because one of the things that was found, the spending plan is basically your budget for handling your programs for housing. And you'd have the small change, and then you'd have to bump back to court and try to get a date to get the judge to approve it. And that just took a long time when you're trying to take advantage of a, of a new opportunity that came about. And you're kind of stuck because you couldn't spend the money. So that's to get, that actually is a good idea, to actually get an expedited administrative process that doesn't have to keep involving the court system. And then the Housing Mortgage Finance Agency is supposed to finally update what are called the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls. That's another implementing thing that says, okay, the way you do, the way you do your debt restrictions, the way you income-qualify the people that apply for the program, all that'll finally get resolved, because there's inconsistencies that exist today, and they're inconsistent, for example, with the law that was amended in two thousand and eight, I mean, you know, sixteen years later, it's still inconsistent. So.
No, wait, seventeen.
So then there are changes in, in how you create the, your plan. You may, I don't know if you know, but there's like different rules that apply, and there's different types. So you can't have all age-restricted units, and that was actually kind of an issue here in Highland Park, because you didn't have enough that were unrestricted as to age of the occupant. So we just barely met the minimum number of what are called family units, those are the unrestricted ones. So we had to scramble a bit. And so, but one of the things that they did is, they've made, the legislators made a big deal about saying, well, age-restricted units, you can now be thirty percent. Well, the thing is, it's not really what they said, because before, age-restricted units were twenty-five percent of the total obligation. Say your obligation was a hundred units, but you could achieve that through twenty-five actual units and twenty-five percent bonus credits. And you would still get twenty-five age-restricted units out of your obligation. Now, it's, if you have that same breakdown of a hundred unit obligation, and you have twenty-five bonus credits, it's thirty percent of the actual units, or seventy-five. So what you can take is only two units. So it's thirty percent of seventy-five units, not twenty-five percent of a hundred. So it makes it sound like they're increasing it, but they actually did not. Makes me wonder if they actually knew what they were voting for, so.
There's a little confusing.
They were trying to keep towns from going all senior housing.
Yeah, and there, no, the, there's a point, because there's nothing to say that, that senior housing, that, that people who'd be eligible for, for senior housing could just live in a family unit. And that, that's what Fair Share Housing Center's argument is. On the other hand, you usually have programs and amenities that are set up for the senior in an age-restricted development that you don't have families. So that's the counter, that's kind of the counter.
Right, there's other building sections, too.
Yeah.
I think the family units, too, are more vision through schoolage families, too.
Because if you look at the statistics, the demand for affordable housing is really centered in the aging, the aging population. That's really where the demand is. They've also added accessory dwelling units, ADUs, compliance mechanisms, that's kind of a big idea floating around the state right now. There's legislation that's been pending for some time, and keep pending, I don't know, where you would have, you would have as a, an owner by right, ability to have an accessory dwelling unit on your property. That's not yet all, but it's been talked about for some time. That's kind of an importation from the West Coast, because there are a number of states where, in California, for example, accessory dwelling units, there are laws that require municipalities to allow such. Then transitional housing counts if household, if the household is allowed to stay, and stay six months. Transitional housing is typically homeless, that'd be like a homeless.
But transitional group housing.
So group housing, yes, that's already, that's already allowed now. Well, because normally that's longer than six months in any. So, but it doesn't say you have to have any of those, that would just be how you would decide to do it in your own plan. Now, one of the things that I think works against people, works against developers wanting to do this, though, the affordability controls for rental units were a thirty-year period of time. Now it's, now it's extended to four years. On the one hand, it keeps units longer in the affordable world. But if you were a developer who was thinking, well, in my career, I'm gonna, I'm gonna build units and, you know, I'll get subsidies to help me build it at the front end, I'll hold on to this project, and at the end of thirty years, then I'll just make it market rate, and that'll be a nice kind of retirement thing for me. Well, forty years is probably too long. So it's kind of a disincentive. So I think that, that, that can work both ways, I think. It works, it might work on one end, not work on the other. The other thing is that, you might be familiar with extension of controls.
I was going to ask you, because I know that was something we dealt with last year.
Yeah, so extension of controls is, and it used to be that, they've extended, time has extended on, so the original extension, like original control period for twenty years, then there will be thirty years now. Not for sale, but for rental. And so one of the things is, we see a lot of instances where a project that was approved in the second round and was built, say it was built in nineteen ninety-five, and the controls are on it for twenty years, and it expired in two thousand fifteen. Well, if you can reach an agreement with the owner to extend them for thirty years, and sometimes there's a payment involved, then you get to count that as another unit, and, without actually building it. That's attractive to quite a few municipalities, where they'll do an extension of control and get a credit, but not building a unit. You know, particularly in towns that are already built up. And, and so if it's forty years, that just, you know, makes that less, less available. Some other changes in these bonus credits. And so remember, it's twenty-five percent of the obligation can be bonus credits, and you can kind of add them up. So these are all, the maximum obligation is at twenty-five percent of the obligation, it's still true. Age-restricted units get a half bonus credit up to ten percent of such units. So that's not, it used to be a one-third bonus credit, and it, it applied up until the whole obligation for age-restricted. That's much more restricted than it used to be. A hundred percent affordable project with land or funds from the municipality gets a bonus credit per unit. So that's actually a good, that's actually a good credit, so. If you, if there's a low-income housing tax credit project in your municipality, and most municipalities donate land, which is typically, almost always worth more than three percent of the project cost. Or they help fund it, which has been pretty true recently because the tax credits haven't been worth much money. Municipalities have pulled up money to put into it. That three percent threshold is pretty easy to meet.
Would that be a part of the HUD with any program under those HUD program would?
A HUD two oh two project would fit under that category. So I represented municipality, municipality will be donating the land and that land would be, and also gave them what is called pre-development money of about two hundred and fifty thousand so that they could do the culinary engineering and that kind of soft cost work ahead of time. And so that will be, that will be more money than three percent of the project cost. So that project would be available to have double the credit. So instead of seventy-four units, it would be, you know, a hundred and forty-eight. Then if you have a for sale project that gets developed with a nonprofit partner, half a bonus credit per unit. And with a special needs, you get a bonus credit per bedroom since there's still such demand for special needs housing. And that's often on a, that's often, that's where your group homes come in, for example. The other part that, that that works on is there is a DCA program because there's the low income housing tax credit program starts in size. It may be fifty, fifty units at the low end and can go up to say maybe ninety-five units. They can also get bigger, but then they're phased. But, and then group homes go up to about six or seven units at the biggest. And so there's this piece in between where there's really a funding, you know, it's like, if you want to do kind of a bigger project at that, but not that big of a project. There's not a program for it, but a few years ago, DCA did start one that allows, call it like a mini low income housing tax kind of type idea. Where they, you can do up to twenty, twenty-four units. And so there was a special needs project that was done by the Gloucester County Housing Authority partnership with Rowan College, which is a community college down in Defford Township. Where I do their affordable housing. And that project is right adjacent to their high school that supports special needs students. And so when they matriculate out at age twenty-one, they'll have a place that they could actually move to right next door where they're used to going. And there's ready-made employment right there for them at the, at the college. Plus there's really good, they have also kind of well, they have a wellness center too. So they have all these services that can be brought to bear for young adults in particular, especially. So that's like such a concept that worked out there with money that was coming from the DCA program. For that kind of small or mid-sized project. So that kind of thing might work too here in, now depending on what your number is, might work here as well. You know, smaller scale than trying to find a site for like a fifty-five. So there's lots of kind of ideas.
Supportive housing apartments.
Yeah, that's, that's in that same, that's in that same. So we have some other changes, the extension of controls we were, we were just talking about. Half a bonus credit is a rental, market to affordable, bonus credit for you with assigned contract. Market to affordable is you take a regular unit, write down the cost, has to be bought up to code. Then it's sold at a reduced price to an eligible income person. Typically that has to be someone who's at moderate level just because they need to get a mortgage. And low income households can only very rarely get a mortgage. Then there's also if you have more three bedroom units than your required municipal minimum, you have a bonus credit for those. Very low income units above the municipal required minimum, also a half bonus credit. If you convert a non-residential use to a residential unit, say you've got, and that might work here too. You had some unused office space on the second floor, for example, downtown. And that got converted to some affordable units above. That could work and have half bonus credits as well, part of a redevelopment plan. What you're thinking, right? And then you, units within a half mile of a transit facility are a garden state growth zone. I think the transit facilities have to be already identified in the New Jersey Transit. And there's a law that set that up already.
So what if one passes through a town?
No, that I don't, yeah, I've looked into that and it certainly did seem like it was written for certain specific cities. One of those type of pieces of legislation. So anyway, I'm not sure that's gonna help you there. So that's kind of an overview. And it's like, again, it's like nuts and bolts. They have expanded a bit the number of the types of housing units that could be affordable, considered affordable here. And it's a matter of doing that. Now you may well be in good shape. Depending on what your number is, because you have quite a few bonuses that you can bring forward from the third round.
And we also have our, having stock the share, just a person at home might be watching. We have some newer redevelopment projects that we're working on, you know, which I know faculty as well.
Right. And depending on where you come out, you might not, so a redevelopment project kind of by its nature, depending on what it is, can, yes, like especially if you have certain particular designs you want or materials. Can, that can be a cost raising part. And you may not need to, I mean, the typical kind of affordable housing inclusionary development is, you know, fifteen percent rental, twenty percent for sale. But to make that work, you might not need to have as higher percentage. There's nothing that says you have to have that higher percentage in inclusionary development.
Explain again. Fifteen, twenty.
No, I don't think that that's you, I think you can be judicious about how that works.
Or we can look at our, our policies are in fifteen.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. I agree. Good policy to have. But if you're trying to achieve some other ends and you, and you're close, say you're close with the bonuses on reaching the goal and it's a ten-year period, might be able to have more flexibility on the redevelopment and to make that, help make that come about. So just keep that in mind. And like maybe more standard stuff stays in that, right?
So what, I'm sorry, so, so the whole dispute process, right? I mean, one of the things that you said is it, it seems like we're in decent shape. We're two hundred over, or you know, we need one fifty-eight, we got one, whatever those numbers are.
Two, you have a hundred, you need a hundred and seventy-three, you have two oh two plus probably eleven.
Okay. So, so it seems as if we're in good shape for, for the fourth round, right?
Yeah.
So is it most of the time, it's municipalities that are in bad shape that are part of the dispute aspect of it, like it's people suing.
Um.
I mean, is something that's because we have too much.
It seems to me that the, the people that would get challenged are going to be larger suburban towns with some vacant development.
Right. I mean, I think we've made a commitment to affordable housing and so we really want to. If, if, so that, I guess what I'm trying to say.
It would be the target audience in my mind.
I don't think we'd be the target audience for disputes, right?
Right.
So probably versions like five thousand.
Facing deficits coming out of third round that they never met.
Right.
Plus a new obligation of gosh knows what. And they're the ones you would.
But we, but we anticipate we're, we don't know yet, but we think we're okay for the fourth round. Based on what we have now, or do we, is that?
I'd rather, I'd rather not talk about it.
I think.
You want to go in closer.
It was in Mendham, I was at the mayor's conference. And they were saying like, it's towns like Mendham, that you have a maximum requirement of, you know, of, of five, five acres and stuff like that. They have not met their requirements, just like those towns that have stipulation, how much acre you can build on and and they have no requirement because there's no affordables.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Um, I think the, in my mind, after, I've had the benefit of having a couple of conversations with Brian and his colleague Elaine, who actually works a lot on our day-to-day monitoring. And in my mind, the number, let's see what our obligation is. I was thrilled to hear, I mean, you kind of buried your kind of, I think, really important point was that they're taking a very proactive stance for their clients, trying like us to, that we're not gonna just wait and hope that DCA meets their deadline. We're gonna do our best to do them to, because the, the criteria are very specific in the law. So we should be able to reasonably, with your expertise, figure out what our obligation is. And hopefully when they get their numbers out, they're pretty close and we can just move on to implementation like that. I said, I would, in my wildest dreams, we'll have a very boring vanilla experience with this new structure. And it's gonna be about just keeping us on track, getting, keeping our deadlines met, avoiding dispute if we can avoid it. And if we feel strongly about they've made an error in our numbers, we may have to go there. But I, we don't have a reason to feel pessimistic, I don't think. I guess I want to leave on an optimistic note. I, because that is my sense from being involved with the monitoring this whole time, that, that our attention to this in a consistent way is paying off in the long run. And there are a lot of partners in town that work on affordable housing, which also help us with, meet our obligations. So I think if we keep, you know, that mentality, we'll be fine.
On keeping.
Yeah.
What you're doing.
But it's a lot more and it's a lot of numbers gaining and all that other stuff. But I'm, you know, I think we have the raw material to be able to have a really credible plan when, when it's time.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Just one more quick, the, the legislation on ADUs that is out there and pending is, do you have any? Should we move ahead of that or should we move, wait for that? Should we? In your opinion?
Well, I guess the question is whether it's really a policy decision about whether you think that's something you want to encourage in town or not. So that's kind of, I mean, you have, I think you, I think you have a fair amount of college students at this, at this stage here. That would probably, you'd have more of them, I think. So it depends on whether you think that's positive or negative influence in town.
Yeah, just, just regarding ADUs, I mean, yeah, I think it's, it's you know, the governor outlined a million dollars in construction for ADU development. And I think that appeals to maybe more traditional affordable housing developers and less maybe the kind of granny flats or, or, or or others, because what it allows is that some of like more familiar nonprofit developers in town who purchase single-family homes and maybe convert them, which I think there are credits for that too. Can also develop on those lots. And that way you won't have, you won't have a situation where you're gonna have, you know, a private homeowner having to work with the affordability controls that might have to apply to this ADU, you know, on their property, which is hard. So, so I think it does provide a lot of leeway for, for some.
Because the, the rules have all allowed for some time accessory units like that. And there's been very little uptake in the state, maybe a hundred and fifty units throughout the entire state. And it's precisely because of that, is they'd be happy if they, you know, rent to their friend's son or daughter who's not making a lot of money, but they don't want to go through the hassle, the deed restriction and the affirmative marketing and the other aspects of the implementation that would have to happen. You know, it's just not worth it.
So this would be de-restricted ADUs, you know, as opposed to my, my mom moved into the unit and I'm moving into the house, kind of ADU, you know. Is there, that, that benefit is for kind of living and, you know, being able to age in place. There's a huge AARP push on ADUs, not with affordability specifically, but it does also help someone with a fixed income maybe afford to stay in their house or they can rent their house out and move to the apartment, you know, gives you more options.
Yeah. Not so much here, but in Hunterton County, for example, they have had a couple of groups that pushed the, what's called the ECO, Elder Cottage Housing Opportunity, which is, which is a basically manufactured unit, about six hundred square feet, brought to typically a single, a suburban style or exurban style. Single-family detached property. And that, that unit is installed on the property separate, hooked up to the utilities of the house for the aging parents or parents. And so that's, that's there. And it's, and it's there until the parents no longer need it. And then it's taken off the lot. So it's a temporary housing.
That's where you have a larger property, probably.
We don't really have a lot of large properties.
That's why I said that, yeah.
I, I, my concern with ADUs inside the affordability control is that especially in our town, C and D soils to store water runoff, impervious coverage and infrastructure. Anybody who drove down South Second saw a house right at the corner, getting a new sewer line put in. So horrendous, horrendous mess, almost the cost of my mortgage. And we have C and D, you know, shale soils. So we would have to seriously review it, it'll play in a town like this.
Oh, that's a good consideration to keep in mind.
I left, I, I, I did, I left out one, one last thing of my thought was that, was that it does seem like the legislation would move forward since they already took this kind of toe in the water. You know, in the state budget. So I mean, it does seem, it seems like. It has, but it does seem like there's a, because it's outlined in affordable housing, though. There's money, you know, it seems like it kind of teed itself up.
I think they, they kind of, I think there was a big push and then they kind of held off because it was a lot of feedback.
Right. But it is, it's listed in this legislation and to the budget. So it does, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Brian. Really appreciate you making yourself available.
Not a problem. Glad to help out.
We're not, this was all good news.
Well, the main message, if you take nothing else away, is we're on top of it. And we've been on top of it with the help of Clark, Kate, Hans and Brian and.
We're not only on top, we're ahead. Yeah. So, you know, our intention is to maintain that. Next, we have Track C.
So yes, and Chris, maybe you can join us. I'll do a little lead-in, one of the situations, if you don't mind. So we wanted, Chris and I wanted to take a little time with you to discuss the amendments we're gonna need to make to the redevelopment plan. I don't have it showing yet, so it's not, nothing to do with that. So the, it's, we're actually amending the Track A through D plan from two thousand and twenty-one. But we're really just focused for this round of amendments on Track C. Because that's the one we've gotten the furthest along in the design. And just to kind of recap, Chris will have some slides with some pictures, but we had our community meeting in June where we revealed kind of the concept plans and design for the building that we're hoping will come in that swath between second, South Second and South Third. And so one of the necessary things which we explained at that meeting, but just to kind of refresh everybody is we need to amend the plan. Not the least of rich reason is because there are more lots included in the building. We remember, and Chris has some images for you. We were focused on our borough-owned properties when we went out to the RFP with the understanding that hopefully maybe somebody might come in with a bigger. with the understanding that hopefully maybe somebody might come in with a bigger picture in mind. But our plan doesn't really have all the design elements and things for a bigger building. So what we wanted to walk you through are kind of where we are in the process. And we really need to get moving on the amendments because we can't enter into that redevelopment agreement that would ultimately need to happen, nor any financial agreements, until we have a plan that includes all the properties and allows for the type of development you want. Um, and incorporates the feedback that we've given and heard, um, throughout this process. So Chris will kind of present kind of the, an overview of the amendments and why, you know, what we're going to do. Our hope is to have the document, um, drafted and ready in the next week or so for review. And then if we think it's ready for primetime, hopefully to be able introduced in the, in the second meeting in October. Um, but that's subject to us taking the landing and everybody being comfortable with the amendments once they're fully drafted. Um, but, you know, as we're looking at the year end with, between, again, amendment has to go get introduced. It has to go to the planning board and then has to come back. We're running out of meeting dates in the, in the year and we don't want to straddle calendar years on this. So that's some of the juggling we're doing. What I also wanted to mention is what we're not talking about tonight, not because I'm trying to be, you know, sourpuss, but what we're really focused on are amendments to the redevelopment plan. Not, we're not going to discuss, although I would certainly say it's important, but I know from the community feedback, from our conversations, um, there's a lot of interest in farmer's market continuity of operation, things like that. Very important, they're not components in a redevelopment plan. So they are important logistical things that we need to sort out with Main Street and we are committed to doing that. But we're not here to discuss that because I don't have all the answers. And we're focused on the things we need to do to effectuate the building on the site, not all the mechanics behind it. So that's one, it's not, I'm not trying to minimize the point, but it's just not prepared to talk about it. I'm also not prepared to talk about the design of South Third. Um, that's going to be done through the RFP process we've already discussed, um, with the help of the consultant that we engage on that. And in conjunction with our community partners, Main Street not being the least of that. So this plan will mention South Third in a very high-level way as being, you know, the future plaza area. But that's about, oh, it is not the plan that dictates the future of South Third. So I just want to kind of put that in the parking lot of things that are very important, but we're not going to re, you know, we're not going to present on tonight. The, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention was, um, we did go through the community comments that we got from the public meeting. There were some themes that kind of emerged. I was encouraged in that a lot of the comments were in our plan already in some way, shape or form, in terms of concern about stormwater, concerned about green infrastructure, you know, um, massing and things like that. And Chris is going to walk you through some of those things, but one of the, that was something that I was encouraged by that, you know, our, our existing plan. And we're going to use this as an opportunity to amplify and maybe expand on some of those components in the plan, just to make sure it's, it's, it's stronger. Um, but generally speaking, you know, uh, the vision, and Chris will talk about that in a minute. And, uh, where we're, what we're trying to achieve with a larger building, a lot of those standards are in our plan. We just need to make sure we're reflecting some of the design considerations of the kind of concept we presented already. So, uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris. He's going to walk, but probably, we've worked on this together, so I probably took some of these points, so I apologize. I know, but you have all the details, um, and he's the person really in the weeds, making sure the plan protects the vision that we all share and that we think the community shares. And, um, let me just share my screen with for you, Chris. Hold on one second. If I don't share the wrong thing. And then let me get you a full screen. So I can see.
Add to that thing.
And then that'll all disappear. There we go. And I think that's your first slide, right? Okay. And everybody knows Chris.
Thank you for having me here.
I just remember, everybody, we got our mic on the ceiling, so four eight a little.
I think as you, as you all know, I'm a little soft spoken, Jennifer, if you think I need to speak up. So as Terry mentioned, it's gone through, Track C has gone through an evolution. And as we know, Track C is part of the downtown redevelopment plan 2021, A through D. So this is just one component of it. Uh, the redevelopment designation started back in 2005, which considered all these lots, did not go to the corners for some reason. And as we beat into death in the Mass Plan and 21 Plan, uh, redevelopment really hasn't gotten anywhere for a, a variety of reasons. I'm not going to go into why. Uh, but the boroughs, they want to be corrected, as you recall, in 2021. With respect to Track C, let's focus on the properties that we do own. Take a proactive approach, uh, see what sticks, lands. And then, as you know, we went through the art, as Terry indicated, went through an RP process. Uh, that plan was adopted, RP process designated, uh, Garden Homes as a conditional redevelopment for this parcel. Their concept plan went beyond the boundaries of 21 redevelopment plan, which the RFP anticipated and allowed for. Because the idea was to at least jumpstart redevelopment downtown, you got to start somewhere. So the conditional redevelopment Garden Homes, they present a concept as, as it evolved, you saw the building up there. Beyond the, the boundary of the 2021 plan. And when we did go through the analysis of discussing, really negotiating that, well, what should this building look like? And as they started to really buy additional, assemble additional properties, uh, the, this Borough Council, Mayor Council decided, well, well, let's take a fresh, let's take a step back, let's take a fresh look and see what we need to do. With the bigger building, from practical perspective, as you recall, on the, uh, these lots, everything in blue, including light blue, is an area needed redevelopment. Everything outside of it, area needed rehab, comes quite complicated from a financial perspective to be able to do an agreement. If part of the projects in the rehab area and part of the projects in redevelopment. So from a practical perspect- perspective, it was necessary to really reconsider, uh, expanding redevelopment designation. Uh, and that's just from a financial perspective. I think more importantly though, from an urban design perspective and from a community interest standpoint, we try to figure out a way, is, can we get access from North Second, or South Second? And should we think about having more elbow room on Magnolia? Because Magnolia driveway is identified numerous cases, including at the public meeting, uh, it's dangerous. A lot of cars go through there, only one access point. If you have a bigger project, still one driveway, not a good idea. So, um, the borough did ask L K, myself, to do a study to see if these properties, out of the line of yellow, uh, met the criteria of area needed redevelopment and it did. And what that did in effect was it now expanded redevelopment designation to these properties. As a reminder, the 2021 plan only considers these three properties. The redevelopment concept that we're considering does not consider all those areas. Uh, it does include lots 13 and 19, which is the house on Magnolia as well, South Third. But more importantly, the two properties at the corner of South Second and Raridan. At this time, we are not including lots 37, 38, 39, which is a three-corner lot, uh, sorry, three properties at the corner of New Town Tables, Future Plaza. Because that particular, those particular properties really needs another look, probably a future plan, uh, needs a whole nother, uh, study be- because of its relationship to the plaza. So those are not in plan yet. And frankly, as far as I can tell, Garden Homes has not been able to assemble those properties, which is fine. Because I think as we discussed, that needs a special focus. It's something for a future.
So just to clarify one thing, because it is confusing, they are deemed areas in need of redevelopment. But for the purpose of the amendment that you'll be contemplating soon, we have not included them in the downtown redevelopment plan amendment that is going to be proposed, the, that, the corner of Third, there's two, you know, four lots there. So just don't be surprised if you don't see that, because we think there's a lot we need to think about in conjunction with the plaza, which we're not there yet. And that would make, if we decide to go that route, that would be a second project and a different plan that would be addressed. But it was worth the study so that if at a future date, it makes sense, we've got the designation, we can, we have all the tools in the toolbox.
And just to be clear, we include a lot, 19, the house, not because it has to be part of the plan, it's because it was designated as a part of the expansion of the area. We did discuss potentially expanding assets, but the redevelopment has to be able to engage and purchase the product, it's not required.
And there's no condemnation power in our designation in this area.
It's there if they wanted.
There are voluntary participants in this plan, if the developer thinks it's necessary and if they want to participate. So, but the access issues with those two lots, we just felt, let's keep them in because the project's still taking shape.
Yeah, otherwise the plan will, obviously, save the house, it's a permitted use and will remain there perpetually if they choose to. Uh, moving on to the original vision for Track C. Uh, so if, this is in, directly taking from the vision statement in the current plan. Uh, the primary purpose, obviously, it's the last sentence in the redevelopment plan, uh, in the vision statement. Primary purpose is to bring more people to live, work and shop on Maryland, really just applies to all four tracks, but this is particularly important here. And with respect to the borough-owned properties, the concept was, well, it could be infill with one or more taller mixed-use or multifamily buildings. Uh, given the, the break of the street, the way the street angles, this could be an opportunity to terminate a vista that is drive down and see a lovely building, a tower feature perhaps. Um, and some of the specific details in the vision statement included a connection from Raridan to Magnolia, having a safe passageway, uh, from a public plaza to the parking area by the performed church and to Magnolia Street. And comments about improving access visibility to that driveway. Uh, the limited retail is intentional, that was mentioned in 21 Plan, because it's already not retail, it's mostly office space. Uh, we want to focus more the retail environment in the corners, uh, especially closer to the South Third Plaza. And in terms of uses, a whole range of permitted uses, as with the current redevelopment plan and the current CBD zoning for that matter. Obviously, we're going to encourage apartments because we do want people to live, work and shop downtown, uh, but also allow for residential on the ground floor. In terms of refining the vision, so this is sort of a reaction to, it got bigger, right? So it's like, alright, well, what do we do? We don't want to lose the vision. Um, but frankly, this is sort of like an exciting moment, also scary, because it's such a big project in town, we got to manage it, right? So this larger redevelopment area means opportunities, but also challenges. And that's what we're trying to deal with in this amended plan. First thing is obviously preserve the initial intent of that vision, the taller building in the center of the block. Uh, additional public gathering spaces now possibility, instead of small borough-owned properties and maybe small space. Since it got so much bigger, it's like, well, you can add more public spaces and link it to the South Third Plaza. Uh, provision for public parking, before it was not really possible to consider a large number of public parking spaces. Uh, now we have the ability to mandate it, uh, and that's part of the negotiation process. And obviously, with a larger footprint, means we need to revise bulk regulations and the design standards. Because if we took the existing standards and simply stretched it, that would mistake. And I wouldn't be surprised if you guys yelled at me, just get out of here, what were you thinking? Because if we allow for four or five-story buildings, we do not want that at the corner, right? And we need some open space. The building's bigger, it needs to breathe a little bit, need, so we have to think about, uh, like air and space between buildings, especially just residences. And sort of dealing with the impervious coverage for that matter. And that is really just trying to hone in right standards to allow for something like this, still subject to negotiation refinement. Uh, as we indicated, the, the current plan allows for four and five stories, but it wouldn't be appropriate to extend it to South Second, uh, because it would tower over the church. The existing, uh, buildings, a lovely two-and-a-half-story building, this is three-and-a-half stories, which is actually lower than what the current redevelopment plan allows, which is four stories. So we're trying to manage the size of building and pushing buildings, parts of buildings back and so on and so forth. And I'm just going to run through some images, so the public.
So a reminder of like, what are we trying to do again? Because we haven't looked at these pictures in a while.
These were, uh, before and after images that were shared at the public meetings. So I'm, I'm not going to really say much other than just a reminder of, uh, the before and after. So the, these are some same vantage point as the color-coded diagram, uh, not, not before and after. So you notice that how close the, um, the building there is to the sidewalk? With a larger building, that's not appropriate, so we got to step it back. So we have to rethink some of those standards since it's a bigger project. Uh, with regards to the bulk regulation specifically, so these are the meat, this is the meat and potatoes of the actual amendments that were presently writing as we speak, including after this meeting, typing. Um, so obviously need to adjust the massing height and setbacks. It's not appropriate to just allow four or five stories everywhere. Uh, we do want to allow for the tallest story, uh, massing at the center of the block, which is really the intent of the 21 Plan, which is the borough-owned lots. And step it down as you get, uh, closer to North, uh, South Second, my mistake, let's update that.
Yeah. I didn't even notice it.
I'm sorry. Uh, maintain the deep setback on Magnolia Street, that 200% setback, obviously important to all of us, uh, and it has, has to be maintained and continue to maintain that. Uh, we do want to continue that urban setback sort of built-to experience, provide for a nice enclosure to the street. Uh, there's some comments from the meetings, like you really need to think about three-story massing. That's sort of what the townhouses sort of replicates, that three-story mass, that's a good comment. But also wide sidewalk to street trees, they are right, we need to make sure that streetscape is designed appropriately.
Absolutely.
Um, especially since we're now really ripping up probably the entire sidewalk in Raridan, having this opportunity to report. Uh, so those are bulk regulations. A design standard, this gets a bit, but.
Can I do one quick reminder just to sure, put it in there is that, that one of the things that we really did not want to do is have a massive one monolith going the entire way. We didn't want that, we, they didn't, the public didn't want that. And, you know, so the, the bulk standards and some of the things you're talking about are really about setting off and setting, so that it doesn't look like there is just this massive one.
A giant canyon.
A giant, you know, a can, so that, that's.
They don't usually build buildings that way. No, that's how they, no, I meant, the way we want them. We'll build them the way we don't want them, if we don't.
Right.
If we don't put our.
Specify that it has to be broken up and, and set back and all of those types of things.
And I, I should mention, like, what has been very good is this has been a partnership with Garden Homes. Their architects worked very closely with Chris on these amendments also, you know, this isn't, you know, so it's not like we're jamming some idea down their throats. They're fully aware that these changes are coming and these are going to be their obligations. That's why they presented the building they presented in June. Um, but, but we need to make sure all of our, our visions protected in the plan.
So Catherine Hale, that's a great comment, because that's the second bullet point. Designers and make sure the building's broken down into multiple and smaller forms, to the point where we're saying, you're, I'm, I'm going to nerd out, talk about the science, and it's what certain like standards.
Brian got to nerd out, so you get to.
I love it. So you have building standards that must be at least four different forms, at least this wide and not this one, and wider than this distance. So it's requiring a building to be broken up, uh, into smaller forms. And make it really look like four or five different buildings put together, but allow for the flexibility for a hallway and elevator system, which will allow for efficiency and getting more units, more affordable housing units and efficiency for parking. The addressing of the two levels of parking, this is mainly a site-specific condition, but the plan will generally say, um, and emphasize the current standards that say provide accessibility, not just access, but what we heard was, got to make sure that, uh, parking lot's accessible. Not just for able-bodied persons, but really make truly accessible. In the case of two levels of parking, that is a challenge for the developer, but we're going to hold them to it. We need to make sure there's accessibility from Raridan Avenue to Magnolia Street. As in visual interest in that, uh, walking corridor, uh, a couple of comments in the public was, got to make sure it doesn't look like a cavernous tunnel. And add in some, uh, I think a comment was suggesting setting art on the walls or windows or art, art lighting, just like I'm writing. Uh, those are great comments and we're going to put them in. Now, obviously, part of that, including landscaping, lighting and whatnot, just make it safer.
And secure, and all those things add security, you know, because it has to feel safe, otherwise people weren't going to go through.
And then as, as I implied earlier, enhancing the building and streetscape designs, that way the frontage is enjoyable and safe. And that includes wider sidewalks, uh, something we want to talk about, explore with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, is to, uh, think about, uh, an improved tree print infrastructure, including sort of treatment trains, uh, that will allow for additional street trees be planted and have a support system for the roots to grow and not damage the sidewalks. And of course, a ton of landscaping throughout the building, uh, foundation landscaping and shade trees, roof decks with green roofs, blue roofs and whatnot. Uh, and other means of adding green infrastructure, a lot of comments talk about, there's so much impervious surface, not realizing there's a lot already impervious surface there now. Uh, so this is an opportunity for the correct those conditions and improve storm management and retention. Uh, other comments which are not really in the plan, sort of reminders, uh, so the permitted uses already has flexibility and the public was saying, you got to make sure it's flexible. I, I will have to express, uh, well, I'll profess that now a little bit. I wouldn't say the word inappropriate, but we did throw at the idea, like, how about a two-story restaurant? And some people said, I don't know about that. What about a theater, a co-op space, a market? Those are all great comments. Two-story restaurant, it's just a tin, so let's draw something, got reactions to that. Those are all great comments, two story restaurants just a pin, so let's draw something, gather reactions to that. But do I make it clear, all those concepts, including a theater, uh, market and co-op space, flex space, rental party room space, are all permitted uses. And frankly, it'll be a great idea, and I'm glad the community is really thinking about those spaces. Um, so again, the lack of retail space is intentional.
Because that was one of the comments that I think we heard in both in slips of paper, but in the meeting. Why isn't there more retail? But that was from the beginning, the strategy, we may or may not utilize every we may go a different way on track day, the future track day, you know, we're gonna take it, but I, I still maintain, I think it was the right call, and we don't envision outside of the corners. But we do have a lot of public space on that frontage that we're gonna have to work on programming and.
It's important to support our current merchant.
That being said, there's nothing in the plan that limits retail space, so it's gonna respond to the market.
Yeah.
But the initial concept is keep the retail, activate the corners. Uh, and of course, affordable housing will continue to comply, and it looks like we're gonna just head right into the fourth round of four numbers, maybe head to the fifth round.
Yay.
Uh, and that's pretty much it. Yeah, it is.
Great, uh, council members, questions?
So basically.
Oh, sorry, so I was just gonna say, I mean, I don't have more of a common question, but I think the takeaway here is that they presented um, a very nice kind of image of what they're planning to do there, that was informed by our um, original concepts and goals, um, and the changes that we're gonna make here, uh, that we're considering here tonight, are really to kind of tie up all the loose ends and sort of uh, make it a requirement that will ensure that we actually get a final product that resembles kind of what they propose, again, informed by our decisions, and with a few tweaks to kind of like really make sure it captures our vision, so it sounds good to me.
Um, I do also want to add a part of the beauty of the plans we've been writing, which is called on tour from our redevelopment attorney is, we've written one of the general provisions, portion of the plan, really, this is really nerdy, uh, but we require a redevelopment agreement to be executed prior to submission of the site. So Terry has to be happy with.
We are happy with that.
So there's a double, uh, there's just two things, help and support.
This also helps the public understand, we heard we're maintaining the integrity of what we want to try to achieve in the plan. It also helps the planning board, because eventually it will land on their laps and they'll have an updated plan to compare to what gets submitted. Um, so, um, yeah, so basically, we're gonna be updating this baby. Um, but we're focusing on track C, and there'll be a day, hopefully not too far distant future, where we're gonna be coming back to talk, have a community meeting about track A, and talk about the amendments we may need, they'll be different, but there will be some uh, to, to effectuate that project. So this is also a good kind of dry run and kind of how we intend to um, move on these, you know, moving forward.
Do you want to just remind everybody the process of, it goes to us applying to, you know, just so that we know.
Yeah, I think it's a good point, because so Chris and I will work on the draft, Joe's office will review, it'll come to your uh, laps to review and hopefully feel comfortable at introducing the amendments we propose. There'll be a uh, introduction of an ordinance, basically is an ordinance amendment. Then it gets referred to the planning board for master plan consistency review. Um, I'm optimistic that because we are, we now have an adopted plan, we're really just I, I think they'll see the consistency uh, pretty straightforward. Um, especially with Chris there to kind of walk them through what the, the amendments are. Then they, they have to basically sign off as it not inconsistent, then you can have a public hearing and a vote at a future meeting, so there's a lot of process to come, there'll be a presentation of the planning board of the amendments in a lot more detail. Um, certainly at the time of introduction, the revised plan. One thing, I'll just put it out there, we were debating, could we do like a track change version, but we think it's gonna look like like garbage, because of the edits and things that are going, because we're actually moving some sections around. So what we're gonna do is kind of have a one page key, so that people can just identify where the new areas are, so that we make it easier for people to find. And they don't have to hunt and pack, also for ourselves. Um, so we'll try to make it as easy and transparent, um, for people to see where the changes are.
We, so we introduce and then first and second read because of the ordinance?
If we introduce, this is the first reading, then it goes to the planning board, that's the way, you can also send it to the planning board and then introduce, but our process has typically been introduced. Refer to the planning board, assuming it's successful, comes back to the council for the public hearing, and then ultimately on the vote. So we did map it out that conceivably, if we introduce in October, we could make it by the December meeting, but we have to make sure everybody's comfortable with the proposal. But I don't think, I hope you come, came away from Chris's points with, there's no real surprises here, we're really talking about changing the the, the plan to better implement the vision that we now, we have a more specific vision.
We heard, and we went, we heard, we listened, and we made the adjustments as the residents suggested, and as residents suggested.
And just, we have a strong incentive to get it done by December, right? Because if we, it goes over the calendar year, there's a, an issue.
Well, you got, we have to reintroduce, so the sky doesn't fall, but it also just holds up, you know, implementation and
Right.
Hopefully, market conditions are improving for developers and that we're gonna wanna, we wanna, we wanna light a fire under this one, right? Uh, you know, and so, you know, we don't want, um, I don't want to call it, it's not bureaucratic, that sounds negative, like, but we don't want to let this, you know, this could slow us down if what we're trying to get to is a construction schedule, you know? Um, and we still have the hard work of negotiating that redeveloper agreement, if there's gonna be a financial agreement. The terms of that, doing all the evaluation, so there are a lot of steps to come, and those are likely next year things. But if we can at least get the plan where it needs to be, that's one major item out of the way, so that, to get us one step closer to implementation.
The goal is try to get as much as we can done this year, and so next year, we can start in the next.
People have been waiting, it's, you know, we had our meeting in June, and you know, it was a little bit of juggling on our part to finally drill down and get, get specific, so, um, just, we want to make sure everybody remembers it's coming.
Okay, any other questions? See, that there's none.
Great, so, uh, it's on, it's on us to get to the next level of detail, and hopefully we'll have a draft for your review before you know.
Cool.
The last item is the zoning map, um, update, which, um, I'll do a quick uh, introduction. Um, we stumbled into uh, the need to do a zoning map update, there were a couple of ordinances in two thousand and four that were passed by prior governing bodies and prior planners and town administrators uh, that never were incorporated into the official zoning map, and I do have, just for everybody's benefit, um, a picture of the map, it's off, I'll let you kind of speak to the ordinance, because I know you've been working on that. But essentially, we need to do this, and we also want to, we're looking, I'm trying to talk and look at the thing at the same time. Uh, we need to, while we're updating the zoning map, why don't we add in some of our more recent redevelopment areas, so that it's very clear? And I'll let, um, Sopra maybe in the next, speak to that, um, I'll put the map up on the scratch.
Um, I want to repeat everything that Terry said, because that's exactly what is going on, um, you know, it happens, you know, and so we're just gonna we're gonna fix it, and so, um, the two thousand and four, I, I give a little bit of history in, in our draft ordinance that you're gonna see, hopefully on.
Sorry, it'll go away.
Yeah, in our first reading, Chris did a really an amazing job, I really want to commend him, because not only did he implement what needed to be passed back in two thousand and four, he's now went in and I'm, it went into incredible detail too, um, nothing's been missed. And thankfully, um, and I don't know if you guys have been back to, I think it's attachment four, right, in the, in your code?
Yeah, somewhere.
We have a two, yeah, we have a two thousand, uh, nineteen zoning map that's there. So everything from two thousand and nineteen, including the two thousand and four, and then everything forward, is now gonna be on this map. So really happy about it, um, I'm a little old fashioned with all the notice stuff that we have to do. But we're letting everybody know that, hey, um, everybody passed the ordinances, everybody saw everything, the map got lost, so here we are. Um, and I think.
Can you maybe walk through the key, the key two thousand and four amendments that we're incorporating?
Sure, uh, the two thousand and four amendment was adopted by ordinance sixteen thirty three, two thousand and four, talking twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Oops, never made it on its way to the two thousand and fourteen map, so when I did a two thousand and nineteen map, I didn't know. Um, and this was actually discovered when I was doing research on the eight, ten, or seven avenue, a couple of months ago. Um, so in two thousand and four, there were three main changes, there were several properties in the seed district on Woodbridge Avenue that were rezoned to CBD. Was sort of coincident, it's coincident with the, well, generally coincident with the main street Holland Park uh, business improvement district boundary, so it actually does stretch towards Edison that direction, so there's less pink and more red.
So these red lots, I don't know if you can see the figures, yeah, so here went from commercial to CBD, which offers a little more flexibility in certain areas.
A second change was on Cleveland Avenue, there was a small strip of properties on Southeast Corner. Basically Madison, those properties were light industrial, they're actually professional office for the past twenty years, we just figured it out. The third change was there was a parcel, actually it's
What do I, oh, we're hearing.
To the top left, um, that, the property just generally in the records reserve area was in the, I forget which zone it was, I think it was R A E.
Yeah, it was, it was recreation and conservation.
And I think it is now recreation, as it should have been, um, and.
Which is pretty much what we all thought it was, it just hadn't made it to.
Yeah.
Last change was the stream corridor uh, protection overlay, is overlay. And that's with respect to the flood hazard line, hundred, hundred year buffer, and a fifty foot buffer from ripperian corridors, so you see a blue hatched line along the well and the mill broke, as well as I think a lot, generally along the Raritan River. Uh, that's all within that quarter overlay, a map was repaired by Chasing Companies back in two thousand and four, but it was a different map. And it's hard copy buried in this office, actually wasn't buried, it was like on top, it was there, but no one knew it was there, so now it's a digital map.
It's also good information for development, so.
We added it for redevelopment, our goal going forward, I promise, every single redevelopment plan that we do will include an update to the map.
Yeah, nice.
That way.
So you can see we've now added, uh, you know, four twenty to four twenty four, upper Raritan, eight, ten, or second. Um, so this is, I think, good cleanup that we're doing, and hopefully, we, we would like to move on this at the next meeting.
Thank you both. Yeah, that, that, that definitely literally fell through the cracks, so thank you for cleaning, the cleanup.
She's right, does have, it's on a different towns.
And it, it was the due diligence you were doing as part of the eight, ten, or second plan that you, where we finalized.
More importantly, it's along the zoning officer. Zoning up, but just, zoning board, we should just send it to them. Yes, what are you getting at?
Any additional questions on this? Okay, seeing that there's none, now we'll go to public comments. Uh, pub, publicly comments, now it's time for public discussion, total twenty one minutes. Three minutes maximum per speaker, comments from the members of public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those attending on Zoom. And we have no members from the public attending in person, do we have anyone on Zoom?
I do see a hand up, Mayor, um, get my glasses on, Jonathan Lerner. If you could just confirm it's you for us?
That's me.
Hi, there.
Hi, I have two questions, um, regarding the, um, the, the setback of the parking on Magnolia Street. Along with, uh, what was referred to as a two story parking deck, I, I don't recall seeing two stories in the plans, unless I missed it. Uh, but where is this two story parking deck gonna be sitting, number one, and number two, uh, the additional plot that you're looking to acquire that leads out to South Third, will that be an additional point of egress from the property in the parking area onto South Third?
Um, just, Mr. Lerner, we typically will let you rattle all, any questions or comments out. And then if the mayor will close public comment, and then the mayor will direct one of us to respond to you, so do you have any other questions, and then we'll, we'll come back around?
Nope, that's just those two.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Um, all right, uh, any other questions for those of you at home?
No, no worries, fans, now I'm gonna close, now I need to close the public session of this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Councilwoman Kinnevera?
Yeah.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Yale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hush?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kinnjua?
Yes.
Councilwoman Justone?
Yes.
Uh, Terry, ask the Mr. Lerner's question about the two story parking space?
Sure, um, and Mr. Lerner, if, um, I'm happy to follow up with you afterwards. I have some illustrations I could show you to explain this better than I can probably say it, but I will do my best if you came to the public meeting, uh, but the, if you, even if you didn't, there's uh, graphics on our website from the meeting. Um, essentially, it's a two level parking structure, but it's taking advantage of topography. So there's one entrance off South Second, a, and it's a lower level of parking, which is really at grade at that point. And then there's another level of parking, but the access point is off Magnolia. The two levels don't speak to each other, so it's not like a garage where you can circulate from the lower level to the upper level. Um, and that's what we presented in June, but I, I recognize that's a, it's a tricky con, uh, concept to get your head around, so there's a access off South Second to the lower level of parking, and access off Magnolia from, uh, for the upper level, but it doesn't read like two stories, I guess is what I'm trying to say. But I do have some, uh, some images I can share with you, if you want to shoot me an email or give me a call, we'll set up a time, I'm happy to do that. Um, and then the other question regarding the South's third property, I believe you're referring to, I forget the lot number, Chris. The deeper one, that, we, there are no specific plans with respect to that property. It would, if, the, the potential to negotiate even the rear yard, a purchase of the rear yard might square off and make the parking situation a little neater in the rear of the building. Uh, but that's something that really the developer would have to negotiate with that property owner, and it kind of is, it's gonna be a financial decision, because we believe the project can move forward without that property. But the idea behind that was potentially rear yard access, and maybe even negotiating a pathway from South Third through, which would facilitate actually access to the church, but also to the, to development. Again, would have to be negotiated with the private property owner, um, uh, but we didn't want to not include the, that lot, because we thought there was some merit to that, um, and we didn't want to have to come back and amend just to add those that lot, and the other lot off Magnolia, similarly, there's no current plans, I think, to incorporate them into the final design. However, we think there might be some reasons they might want to, and we'd rather have it in there, again, not something we can compel any property owner to participate. So that, I hope that answers, but, um, I think you may have my contact, your name is very familiar, so please reach out, I'm happy to go into it a little more with you.
Okay, now I move for an adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, just a quick reminder, community forum, um, on October eighth, six thirty by Irving School. So we can meet.
Only vacations. Upstate New York.
I accept, I think she stepped out the counter. Anybody see a black notebook?